This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Eau Claire School Board. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to all who are in attendance this evening and to all who are joining us over the live stream on ValleyMediaWorks.org or listening live at WRFP 101.9 FM. Secretary Edwards, are we in compliance with the open meetings law?
Yes, we are.
Okay, could we have a roll call please for verification of quorum?
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Clankhammer?
Here.
Commissioner Wugenville?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Commissioner Vu?
Here.
Commissioner Bika?
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg-Boyle is not far away.
She'll be here. Okay, that brings us to our section for the public forum. During this time, citizens may address the board to express viewpoints or concerns on agenda or non-agenda items in the district. You're allowed up to four minutes to address the board. We will not hear personal complaints regarding individuals, board members, or school personnel, nor any person connected with the school district. But once I call your name, please come up to the podium and make sure the microphone is on and has a red light and simply state your name and address. If you're not comfortable with speaking in the public forum, you can always email board members on the district website. And first on our list tonight is Brian Wilchin.
Working, all good. My name is Brian Wilchin. I live at 4505 Kensington Court. Thank you for allowing me the chance to speak tonight. I moved to the Eau Claire area in 1999 after spending two years as an educator in Abbotsford. In 1999, I interviewed for a fourth grade teaching position in Eau Claire. I felt that Eau Claire at the time was a destination district and knew it would be difficult to get a job here. I received a phone call that I was hired and I was super ecstatic. I was excited to start my career at Clegg Horn Elementary. In 2003, the doors of Clegg Horn shut for good and I found a new home at Mann's Elementary and have not left ever since. In my 20 years of teaching in the district, I've seen a lot of changes. Schools closing, new schools being built or renovated, colleagues retiring, and new colleagues being hired. During the course of my 20 years in ECASD, I've also seen what has happened to a once proud destination district. Myself and many other veteran teachers have seen our salaries frozen on several different occasions. I just want you to think about that for a while. Seven different times. When I became an educator in Eau Claire School District, I made a promise to the students, staff, administration, parents, and school board. I promised that I would give it my all to be the best possible teacher I could be. During this time, I was promised I would also have post-employment benefits to rely on when I reach retirement age. This is a promise that I take to heart. I'm a father of three children that all attend Eau Claire School District schools. I'm a husband to a wife who teaches in the Eau Claire School District. We have invested our lives into this district. We have made Eau Claire our home, our destination city. To now have to worry that the district that I've dedicated my career to could drastically affect these benefits really pains me to the core. I feel like I am not valued for the dedication of service to this district. A district that was once a destination for teachers is becoming a district of devastation with all its cuts over the years. You cannot continue to balance a budget on the backs of its heart, its employees. These cuts to OPEB would affect over 600 staff in the Eau Claire School District. That's over half of the total employees. Enough is enough. Please take my words to heart tonight. Your decision will affect myself, my wife, my children, the other 600-plus employees and their families of the district, and all students that attend Eau Claire School District schools. As a final note, I want to share the impact that we educators have on our students. It's kind of funny, but I just got this email last night and Patty, I don't know if you can put the document camera up. Oops, very tiny. I think I know how to work these buggers. Focus. I'll read it. "Hi, Mr. Wilchin. I just wanted to let you know that I was accepted into Harvard. I plan on studying film, a subject that I've always been interested in. Mom has read me the 'I Am Somebody' poem a lot this year. Thank you for being a great fifth-grade teacher." Okay, now that just came Sunday night. Now, I still recite the 'I Am Somebody' chant every morning with my students. We've done this for a long time. It's a powerful and inspires hope in my students that they can accomplish anything. And here it goes. "I am somebody. I am capable and lovable. I am teachable, therefore I can learn. I can do anything when I try. I will not let others stand in my way of learning. I am somebody. I am somebody. I am somebody. I am hoping that the school board does realize that the cuts to staff retirement will affect who it attracts and retains. We are somebody." Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Ruth Bovee.
Hi, I'm Ruth Bovee, 3604 Pine Place, Eau Claire. So, good evening. Like I said, my name is Ruth Bovee. I'm a sixth-grade teacher, geography teacher at South Middle School, and I am an asset to this district. I've had the privilege to call South Middle School my home for my entire 20-year career. I've grown from a new teacher to a leader in my building. The shortlist of the many activities and committees that I've been involved with over the years include PBIS, BIC, PLCs, District Service Learning Grant, curriculum writing, grant writing for flexible seating for my sixth graders, mentoring new staff, mentoring UWEC students, co-planning the overnight Camp Manitow field trip for 300 sixth graders, compensation committee, Code Blue team, student council advisor, department chair, and sports coach. Except for those last three, they have all been volunteer. I share my time and my talent with the Eau Claire School District because I believe in it. I am an asset to this district. The current budget situation is challenging for the district. I get it. At South, we teach students that courageous conversations and feedback are critical for growth. They aren't easy, but we don't want to ignore them. We use our three Rs, respect, responsible, and ready, to help model those appropriate behaviors. We need to have a courageous conversation. As a board, you are not ready to vote on this new OPEB proposal. There have not been any listening sessions with the new data. No one has seen the official numbers. And the numbers that were reported tonight on the news, we don't even know where they came from. Voting tonight would be irresponsible. Of the proposals that were discussed, I stand to lose a lot. As in eight years' worth of benefits. Eight years. That was the best-case scenario. Those benefits were promised to me many years ago. And stripping any employee of benefits is disrespectful. I was loyal to the district through the bleak years with the pay freezes. Those are thousands of dollars that I can never recover, thousands of dollars that I could not put away into some sort of other retirement funding. This vote does not show loyalty to me, my family, my colleagues, the community, or any other future hires. If the Eau Claire Area School District wants to live and breathe its goal to hire and retain highly qualified educators, I respectfully ask you, how will that pan out if you're willing to gut our retirement benefit? If you choose to do this, what are you going to be left with? I ask you to respect me, respect my colleagues, gather accurate information, do the math, communicate your findings to all staff, brainstorm ways to generate revenue, ask for input. You have a lot of qualified people here. We love our jobs. We love this district. We are highly qualified and we are your greatest asset. And now, just a quick last FYI. I'm like boogying out of here right now because my son is a senior at Memorial and I want to see his last, his last winter concert. And then that just brings something else worth mentioning, that there are teachers that can't be here tonight because, like most nights, they're with children of the community doing things like coaching, directing, and supporting our kids in other ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dan Wilson.
Good evening. My name is Dan Wilson, 3753 Patton Street, Eau Claire. I've been a special education teacher in the Eau Claire schools since 1999. Education in Eau Claire has been through a lot in those 20 years. There have been lots of ups and downs. And through it all, the teachers and all staff collectively have been instrumental in passing referendums, taking pay freezes multiple times, and in advocating for the students and families of Eau Claire. Yet, after all of that, there are 655 employees across the multiple employee groups that are being asked to give up part of their retirement benefits. These are the professionals, the leaders, and the loyal employees that have shown continued dedication and commitment to the district throughout these years. These are the people that you will be talking about tonight. As you consider the OPEB proposals later this evening, option B1, which I saw earlier, is no longer on the agenda for tonight, but I'd like to address briefly. B1 not only alters the promise made to those 655 staff, but it focuses most of the savings on 308 of those 655 staff. Targeting 308 individuals and significantly altering a benefit that they have been promised by the school board is simply not acceptable. The option that is on tonight's agenda is capping the insurance benefit at the 2018-19 rate indefinitely. This option will have a significant impact on the morale of your staff now and well into the future. Much more of an impact on the staff than it will on the district's budget. Over the past six months, the district has held multiple listening sessions, and the staff are very appreciative of the fact that we are given a chance to learn about the options, provide feedback, and have our questions answered. However, even though there were multiple listening sessions, none of them included the details on option B1, and none of them even mentioned the cap. To vote on either of them tonight before the actual numbers can be viewed and before staff can discuss the impact of these proposals would be a total breach of trust. We have been there for the district. Will the district continue to be there for us? We know that this board values and appreciates the staff. Education today is a difficult undertaking. None of us, none of us can do this alone. So I will end with a simple request. If reasonable changes need to be made, please take the time to be as informed as possible with the most accurate information available. And then, let's talk about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Jane Adler Corning. Next is Jane Adler Corning. Sorry, it was, I know the clapping was loud.
I didn't prepare as well as some of these people here, but I do come with a lot of emotion and a lot of passion for this district. I've been here for 24 years as a school counselor at Memorial High School. We didn't create this problem. But now I feel like we're being asked to fix it, which brings back all these memories of Act 10 for so many people in this room. These are your most loyal and dedicated employees. Raise your hand if you've been here 20 years or more. These are people that will leave the district with probably 100 sick days that are uncompensated, but they're here every day, and that's a benefit that we don't use, that the district saves on. I feel a little bit of resentment when I hear things like, "If we don't do this, then these things are going to happen." When I came to Memorial 24 years ago as a school counselor, we had six counselors. We had a social worker. We had a career specialist. We had a full-time school psych. Now, we have no, we have five counselors. We have no school social worker. We have no career specialist, and we have a part-time psychologist. When I started, I'm in charge of AP, I'm the AP coordinator. When I started, we gave 125 exams. Now we give almost 1,000, and I'm still responsible for that duty alone. Mental health issues, the counselors, that falls on their back. We have no school social worker. Homeless issues. Danny has become too busy down, doing all of that, and now that has fallen back onto the school counselors. ACT for all juniors, that's another addition that we now have to have. ACP, EL students, and the list goes on and on. So when we say, "If we don't cut, if we don't cut your benefit that you were promised 24 years ago, your pay free, you might have a pay freeze," I had seven. "We might have to increase staff or class sizes," I haven't seen any class sizes really decrease. Saying things like, "You're gonna, you know, all these scare tactics, all these fear tactics," I just, that is a poor leadership style to use fear. And I can tell you, in this room and in the district, there is a lot of fear. People are afraid of what the ramifications are of speaking out in this district. And that's a problem. That is not. People are fearful. They've planned on things for all these years. They have families. They've contributed lots to this district. I love working for Eau Claire Memorial High School. When he gave the example of the Harvard student, I had a student come in today to tell me that they got accepted to Rice. These are awesome kids. This is a great place to work. But we can't continue in fear of what the ramifications are. And I can't go to work every day wondering if I'm going to have insurance that I can afford when I retire in four years. He's got to look at the bigger picture here. And I know, people are in a tough spot. But some of these decisions, like the referendum, we should have included more money maybe into that. There's so many people that voted for that referendum because they wanted the teachers to be compensated. These are your dedicated and most loyal employees. They've spent 20-plus years in this district. You have a moral and an ethical obligation to fulfill the promise that you made or the district made all those years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nick Novak. Could I just ask, are there a lot of people out in the hallway? How many are out there? Can we set up a room in the board office to stream? Where is that? 123B, in case anyone isn't aware. There's an overflow viewing, 123B. Go ahead. Sorry.
My name is Nick Novak. I live at 210 Ferry Street, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, shutdown neighborhood. Superintendent Hardybeck, members of the board, fellow Eau Claireans. For those of you who don't know me, I taught in the Eau Claire Area School District from 2004 to 2010, and again for most of a semester in winter and spring of 2015. While arguably less than perfect on a good day, I learned a hell of a lot working in our public classrooms, far more than I ever learned as a student sitting quietly on a desk. For better or worse, I was distinguished as the only substitute teacher in the district to have received an Honored Educator Award. I got a coffee thermos etched with those very words which I drank from for several years before I lost it. But the student who gave it to me, Simon Adler, he lives in my mind every day. He's one of the reasons why I bother to get up in the mornings, one of the reasons why I ask questions, and why I avoid playing by the rules. He's one of the reasons why I didn't get hired back in 20, in 2010, and why I probably won't ever be hired in this district, and why I'm not sure I even want to be part of it. The truth is, this school district, like so many districts, is irreparably messed up. It's certainly not because we're bad people. We all want to do the right thing. But someone higher up is always looking down on us, trying to wring us out as if you could actually get blood from a turnip. Corporate financiers, bankroll politicians who have no experience in the classroom. Politicians in turn want, wanting to prove themselves tough or fiscally responsible, mandate arbitrary legislation. The silliness trickles down in the form of low wages, regressive tax structures, standardized testing, professional requirements, AP this, AP that. The hoops teachers and students are supposed to jump through are never-ending. Politicians play by the rules or they're thrown out of office. School board, superintendents, district and building administrators, faculty, staff, parents, students, all follow suit. We go through the motions. We don't ask questions. We don't listen to what the people at the bottom are saying. We protect what we have because we can't imagine another way. At least this is the situation as I understand it. We're all afraid of something else, someone higher up. All too easily, we turn inwards or cast dispersions. Morale is as low as I've ever felt it. A lot of teachers acquit. A lot of my friends and former coworkers are mad as hell or living in fear of speaking out. It goes both ways, of course, and I have the luxury of living on the outside, speaking my mind as I see fit. I am the proverbial grain of salt. I guess what I'd ask of the board and Superintendent Hardybeck tonight, listen to your staff. I mean, really listen. Go visit with them on and off-school grounds, attend their classes, participate with students on their terms, not on yours. Ask them what is working and what isn't. Be willing to take any tests that you may require teachers to administer. Think outside the box. The constructs we've created, social, economic, political, they're all backwards and upside down. Good ideas seldom trickle down, they trickle up. And when those of us on top, even when the line of separation is just one position up or a couple thousand dollars difference, when those of us on top ignore the wants and needs and good ideas of those of us on the bottom, the differences become magnified and the problems ignite quickly and with little chance of reconciliation. Sigmund Freud, everyone's favorite patriarchal nut job, called this the narcissism of minor difference. The worst things we are likely to do will be done unto those we care most about. In short, we're all in this together. We can be timid and dismissive, or we can be bold and foresighted. Let's be bold. Let's do the unconventional thing. Ignore the politicians in the donor class. Ask instead, "What's best for us, our community, our staff, our kids?" Let's put ourselves in uncomfortable positions. Let's talk with some of the forgotten people. Let's get out of our desk and grow some food. Put down the screens and pick up some actual books made of actual paper. Let's supply students with sewing needles, axes, and cast-iron pans. Screw the tests. Let's figure out a better funding mechanism that works for Eau Claire. Let's set the standard for our state and our country. The only way the Wisconsin idea dies is if we let it die. Thank you.
Next up is Kelly Moran. Your microphone was on. You can flip back on. There you go.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kelly Moran. I live at 1409 Breast Street, and this is my sixth year teaching in the district. I get to work with incredibly talented students who are excited, who are curious, and want to make connections. I work with very inspiring colleagues who challenge their students to be innovative learners and help foster collaboration, and that's what I would primarily like to talk about. I am part of a group of teachers at Memorial High School. There's roughly 10 to 15 of us who are part of a fine arts committee. There are world language teachers, there's anatomy teachers, English, to name a few, who are part of this. There are hundreds of our students who are involved in this end-of-the-year event. If we had more time, if we were given time to choose how professional development was used, this could be an even more exciting thing. When we are allowed to collaborate, teachers and students grow. I believe staff and student potential is being stifled and being wasted. If teachers were able to use our own professional judgment to determine how we spend PD, professional development, time, this potential could be tapped into and really great things could happen for this district. Instead of using extensive personal time and energy, shouldn't professional development and collaboration happen during the working day like many other professions? Imagine the advantage to students if this were the case. Though myself or my administrator may be reprimanded for speaking here this evening, I believe this is our responsibility to our students to be honest and open when we feel there are things that need to be improved. If teachers are to assist students in becoming positive assets and active citizens in the community, modeling honesty, asking questions, and thinking for yourself should not only exist in the classroom. As teachers, we are simply asking for the opportunity to do what we've been professionally trained to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that brings us to our final speaker signed up, Mark Goings.
Good evening. My name is Mark Goings. I live at E17 450 Connie Road V in Augusta. And tonight, I'm speaking as the president of the Eau Claire Association of Educators. As board members, superintendent, executive directors, association leaders, staff, parents, and community, we all have difficult decisions we must make. We all want quality education for all students in Eau Claire. However, the question is, as educational leaders, how do we lead? Decisions made in isolation are rarely the right ones. It saddens me to have to speak on school finance tonight as this is yet another sign of the failed educational policy put forth by our state for years. You are being asked to balance the books in a system that is rigged against public education. Look, I get that the district has financial concerns right now. We are running at a deficit and the fund balance is decreasing. Staff is the greatest cost. Staff is also our greatest asset. We can't cut our way, we can't cut our way to educational excellence. Cuts in OPEB, salaries, benefits, along with increases in class sizes and decreases in course offerings are not how we grow as a district. That's not how our students improve. That's because we don't have a spending problem. We have a revenue problem. The most dangerous kind of math that the district can do right now is to ask itself, "How many cuts can we make? How many staff can we afford to lose? How many classrooms and programs can we shut down before students are affected?" Folks, students are already being affected. The extra was removed from the budget long ago. If we go down the road of cut after cut, then I guess the better question is, "Why are we even here?" Again, we don't have a spending problem, we have a revenue problem. So what sort of future does a child in Eau Claire deserve? Well, in 2016, the Eau Claire community was asked to support a referendum. Not only did they support it, they passed it at a much higher level than the survey experts predicted. Maybe we should ask the community what they think. We here in this room may be educational leaders, but ultimately, isn't it Eau Claire's educational system? It's their child's future. When you were elected by the people of Eau Claire, it was not to merely keep the lights on in the rooms, the roof from leaking, and a body in front of the class. It was to excel. To work with what is now and strive for something greater. Greatness will not come from cutting OPEB, salaries, programs, and increasing class sizes, or making other cost reductions. That's not how we grow as a district. That's not how our students improve. I ask that you choose to be bold. You were elected to inspire the minds of future generations. If that means going again to fund balance, then so be it. If it means going to the citizens of Eau Claire for a referendum, then I'd say, "Let's get started." Again, I ask you, what sort of future does a child in Eau Claire deserve? Thank you.
That brings us to the conclusion of our public forum. And now to our administrative reports. Superintendent's report, Dr. Hardybeck.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming school board events, starting with December 18th. There will be a Budget Development Committee meeting tomorrow from 10:00 to 11:30 here at the Administration Building. We will have winter break from December 24th until January 1st. On January 7th, there will be a meeting of the On January seventh, there will be a meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee, which will be at eight forty-five AM, and that will be followed in the evening by a regular school board meeting. Both of those meetings will be at the Administration Building. The LEAP Committee meets at January, uh, meets at the Administration Building from four to five thirty on January eighth, and also that evening at seven PM, the Family Advisory Council meets. On January fourteenth, there's an Equity Review Committee for the all-night graduation parties, and that's at six PM. And then January seventeenth, there's the Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Committee, which is followed on January twenty-first by another Policy and Governance Committee meeting at eight forty-five AM, and a regular school board meeting on January twenty-first. So tonight, I think when you came in, there was a report, and this is from the Wisconsin Public Education Network, and we have two board members who are very active in this group, Chris Humbert Boyle and Joe Luthenbill. This group has done, I think, quite a lot within the state to draw attention to funding and to advocate for funding for public schools, and this is their annual report. And I'm sure there probably are not enough copies for everyone in the room, but you can go to their website. And then tonight, we have a special recognition. You know, there's been a lot of talk tonight about our wonderful students, and every once in a while, we get to recognize something that's very, very special. So, um, we're gonna ask Keon Ferguson to stand up and to come over to the podium, and so everyone can see you. And I'm gonna tell you a story about Keon. On a very cold December third morning, this McKinley student, Keon, found a three-year-old wandering outside by herself in a nearby trailer court. Keon went to get a staff member at McKinley and knocked on the door where the child was found next to, but no one answered. So Keon carried the three-year-old to McKinley, where she waited with office staff until the police could be contacted. The child was returned safely to her parents, and we would like to present Keon with this award and recognize him for outstanding citizenship. Keon, we wanna thank you for your quick thinking and your action, and I think it's very possible that you may have saved this child's life. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, well, good evening. For my board president's report, I first want to compliment you. I love the red. I dyed my hair red for tonight so that we could color coordinate, so I'm glad we could match. I first want to make community members aware of a survey that's being launched through Child Care Partnership, the Clear Vision Poverty Summit in Western Dairyland. It's called the Child Care Community Readiness Assessment. We'd like for parents, guardians, and caregivers of children ages birth to five to take this survey. It's a five-minute survey, and they can find it at childcarepartnership.org. And that will help really assess the, the challenge in Eau Claire County of quality, affordable, accessible childcare for families and children, and then look to next steps once we have that data. I also want to thank our DeLong Middle School Student Council for partnering with Children's Hospital of Wisconsin to help meet the needs of dozens of our district families this winter through our Board Office Giving Tree. And with that, with the holidays in mind, during these holiday weeks, we think back to our childhoods, and no matter your faith or family tradition, this time of year holds so much promise for the future. So, most of all, for so many children during this time of year, there's that magical sense of wonder, and so many of you help keep that alive. This is a time of year to be thankful, so I want to express my thanks. I'm thankful for the wonderful staff and students of our school district, thankful for my colleagues on the school board, thankful for the many people who've played a role in my life, and to our community for allowing us to be a part of yours. This is a time to reflect about our opportunities to help others, to practice goodwill to all people, and emulate the spirit of the holidays year-round. So, from my heart to yours, I wish you all happy holidays and a most wonderful new year ahead. And that's it for my report. And for our student representative's report, do you have a report, Abby?
Yep. It's a little bit longer than today. I got a lot of feedback from a lot of students wanting to voice their concerns. The students are really eager and concerned for the agenda item tonight regarding OPEB and the well-being of our teachers. As a whole, the students wanted to address their voice of concern, that the teachers, the people who continuously dedicate their lives, spend way more time than they have to after school to help shape our future, need to be given all the benefits that they can, and yet we continuously see cuts to those benefits. The students from this district wanted to voice that this is cutting from our children, our families, and our communities. We aren't just saving numbers on a budget, we're taking away the livelihood of everything we value and pride ourselves on. I mean, we look at those community core values, and our teachers are the ones that help show the students what that really means and help shape where our community is going. The students acknowledge that this is a complex and very difficult decision to make, but we're just asking for the board to look at the effects this vote has as a whole on everybody and the impact it has on the years ahead.
Thank you. And then that takes us to other reports, school board committee reports, Policy and Governance Committee.
We met this morning, and we have Policy four fifty-three point one-two, Concussions and Head Injury Management in Student Athletic Activities, ready for the board consideration on January the seventh. We also have the recommendation of the Equity Committee on the review of Policy three, I'm sorry, eight thirty, Use of School Facilities, which returns to us without modification, but they want to provide us with information to discuss how this policy should be interpreted.
Okay. So we'll put both of those on our next agenda. Thank you.
You will.
LEAP Committee?
LEAP met last Tuesday. We continue to work on getting our process in place. We got some feedback from Policy and Governance on our policy, and so we're looking at that and reviewing it. We made a lot of progress with developing a process for moving ideas through our committee and, and getting it to the board, so we're feeling very good about, about that, and we'll just be continuing to do our work.
Great. Thank you. I'll share a brief for, for demographic and trends. They requested that I come to their next meeting, some of their members, so I will be representing the board at their next meeting, and I will share back whatever they would like to ask of us or share in terms of feedback. And also, I'd like to just share regarding the Revenue Committee. We'll be meeting on December twentieth this week, and we're going to be discussing our fee schedule as a district, discussing a potential vendor credit card, and then we'll continue our discussion on other revenue ideas. That takes us then to Legislative Update. Do you have a report tonight?
No report.
Okay. And then that takes us as a board into a work session time for a discussion regarding strategic plan priorities and alignment to new and ongoing initiatives and budgetary decisions. I know that there was a PowerPoint uploaded to Board Docs in this area, so perhaps we'd like to start with that.
So, in your last meeting, you talked a little bit about some of the initiatives that we've been working on and whether or not they are aligned to the strategic plan. Most of our initiatives have been really targeted toward closing the gap, and so we wanted to give you just a brief overview of, and I mean, this is a very brief, high-level overview, of some of the high-level strategies that are being used and some of the specific programs that support those strategies.
Thank you. Yeah, this'll be very brief. The good news is, this is one area on our school report card that we saw statistically significant improvement over the past year. We had a four-point increase from the past year on achievement gap, which is, as we checked with DPI, has been a significant improvement over last year and something that we're quite proud of as a district. I understand that in your work session, you're gonna be talking about the board's priorities, strategic plan, and the alignment with our strategies towards that. So this is just to give you a little context going into that. This is a model that a national superintendents group has used to look at the different things that school districts have done to try to close achievement gap. And those eight areas, this is just a sampling of each of those eight areas of things that are being done in the district. This is not by any means all-inclusive. You've even heard a few of these referred to tonight indirectly. So, everything from third grade reading and early education all the way over to adopting new technologies, there's a lot of things in place to try to support all students, because we know it's good for, if we can try to support all students, we will start to close those gaps. And our staff has done a significant heavy lift to try to close that gaps for our students. These also align, we took each of these samplings and then tried to align those to the board strategic plan. And so, you'll see the coding here, these are like the first three, under academic achievement, et cetera, so, just gonna make sure if my mouse will do this. So, if you go back and forth between the two of these, you'll be able to see that the relationship between those strategic, or those strategies and the board strategic plan. To track the achievement gap, what I'm gonna show you right now is a sampling of one graduation class. This is not a, typically, you look at cohorts, you follow a group of students through their educational career. We can do that, and as a board, if you want us to start to track, for example, if we look at third grade reading, eighth grade math, and eleventh grade ACT, which are those key indicators for post-secondary success, we can do some tracking of those cohorts to try to determine and see how the gaps have changed over time with those groups. So you'll see, this is just looking at the class of twenty eighteen and going back and looking at how they did in mathematics, and then going back to the eighth grade and then back to third grade, looking at how they did in English Language Arts, which is fifty-two, these are the percentage of students meeting proficiency, based on the benchmark from that assessment. And then you can see how they did in reading. Now, by the way, this is ELA, which includes reading and writing both. Going back, the WKC did not include those together back when that assessment was given, but you can see, this group had grown from thirty-nine point four, and then earlier was at forty-four point eight. So this is just looking at one class, and then some of the communications we heard from the board was looking at the risk ratios and breaking down that class. So for example, looking at students of color, how much more time is likely there to not meet benchmark, students with disabilities, these ratios that we've talked about before. This is looking at the mathematics, and then this will be looking at the English Language Arts for that same group. So as a board, if you would like to, and your work session would like to do, request that we can do some of this tracking of students over longer periods of time, longitudinal data from their state assessments, to look at the performance and see how those gaps are and the risk ratios are looking over time.
Okay. So I guess it's, the floor is open for board members who wish to discuss, talk about ideas. For those in the audience, a work session is really a flexible time for the board to discuss things, and there's no action taken, it's just a conversation. And we don't have the opportunity to do that a whole lot within the confines of these meetings, so. I know at our last meeting, this was really requested because we felt like there were a lot of things being brought to the board, initiatives, programs, and that perhaps as a board, we'd been approving things or considering things in a siloed way, and there was an interest in looking at these in, in a broader context, with a big picture. And turn your light on wherever, if you'd ever, if anyone wants to jump in. I'll start, since I don't see any lights. One, one area I've thought about, and certainly the longitudinal data is a piece that I have requested several times over email, so I know that's a piece that we'd like to see. And because ultimately, as you alluded to, it gets at following students and, and making sure that we are, that we are seeing gains and that we're not losing students. And so I definitely, as one board member, I would certainly like to see that, and I, I think that other board members would, I know in discussions that we've had, there's been an interest in that from other board members as well. I think that for, for me, what would be helpful is to, to really get kind of a status update on the strategic plan itself, because we, we're making decisions without, without kind of an awareness of where we're at in the different areas, and there are some areas of our strategic plan where the deployment, the success, it's there, it's where we want it to be. There are other areas where perhaps I think there is a lot of, of improvement that needs to take place, but I think that we don't necessarily look at, look at it in that context. And I think that that's where it would be helpful to have guidance at times from the administration and from our educators and others in the buildings to, to see, okay, these are areas in the strategic plan where, you know, we're not, we're not there yet, and let's, over the next year, let's really dedicate resources and time and meetings to these key areas to just hone in. I think that would be very helpful, and I'm not sure how other board members feel. I kind of feel sometimes that the strategic plan itself, we, we, we maintain fidelity to it by deeply connecting what we do to the strategic plan and not by simply, simply attaching a strategic planned section to, to, to the work that we do. You know, it's currently in Board Docs, every single thing that we do, it is connected. It shows that there's a connection, but, but it, but it's, it's at that surface level. And so I think having a, having a deeper idea of where we are at on, on some of these things would be really helpful. But other board members, feel free to jump in. You know, one of the things that, I know we had talked about at the last meeting, and I think it was brought up by someone in public forum tonight, is making decisions particularly about the budget in isolation, or making them in a silo when there are so many moving parts. And I think that looking, looking more deeply at some of these would be helpful, and we've done it before. You know, when we had the new compensation plan, for example, was it a perfect plan? No other, of course, going to be staff who aren't happy, of course, but when the new plan was approved, it was approved after months of work with compensation committees and engaging them in the process. And I think something similar to that with some of the bigger decisions that we're making would be helpful. Commissioner Humbert Boyle, did you want to?
I did, I light on. In looking at the graph and closing the achievement gap alignment to the strategic plan, I want to piggyback on what Joe said about everything we do, you could attach to the pieces of that strategic plan. But I've talked for many years on the board now about the non-choices we're making now, and maybe it would be prudent for us as a board to really look at the pieces that we align our strategic plan to, and have a discussion about some priorities there. What really feeds? What is primary, primary when we have to make a non-choice between one thing and another, and you need both of them? What, what feeds that decision-making that we have to do relative to that, especially in these times of being underfunded, as we work to get appropriate funding, which I hope happens at some point in time? I think that would be important to me. We have the wheel for our strategic plan areas on the, our website. It starts with achievement, and then it goes around. As a board member, I've always looked at them as being all, they're all important, but with what we're looking at now and the decisions that we need to make as a district, maybe we need a deeper conversation as to what, what is the primary driver that makes all those things work? And I would venture to guess it's our high-quality staff. So, I just wanted to make that comment.
One of the, uh, one of the pieces of this, I, I think it is very important that we go back to our strategic plan and, and assess where we're at with it, because we really haven't revisited the strategic plan since it was adopted by the board several boards ago. We have at least half of a new board now, so, and yet we're referencing this, this document that, and, and these, these, so I think that would be definitely a helpful step, is assessing where we're at. That could be a meeting of the board, I think. And it's kind of this, I went to a training about sustainability in organizations, and there's this, the sustainable framework that, it's this wheel of evaluation, assessment, capacity, planning, and implementation, and it's a continu- And it's a continuous wheel. You don't, you don't evaluate things once and continue on. You don't assess things once. You don't assess your internal capacity once. You continue this process. I think perhaps we haven't, we haven't treated it like a wheel. We've treated it more like a, more like a, just a straight line. And so I think treating it like a wheel would be an important, important way to look at it differently. And in looking at capacity, looking at assessing where we're at, not just, not just with the stakeholders in this building, but really going, going into the, into the schools and talking about it. I, for example, collaborative cultures is, is an area in our strategic plan. And, and we've heard at several board meetings, we hear it in emails, that there's, there's a concern about that, about do we have a collaborative culture in the school district? Maybe in some places, maybe not in others. And we need to, we have those honest conversations and, and get to the bottom of that. And what, what are the, what are the challenges? What are the root clauses? How do we, how do we move forward? How do we truly, how do we truly utilize the full, the full power of our system, which is a system of 1,400 staff? That's a huge, huge power that we have. So I think that assessing our strategic plan in that way, though, assessing it deeply and assessing it with all of these people would be very helpful for us as we move forward with making decisions. Commissioner Torres, and then Commissioner Harder.
Thank you. When we're talking about the close, the efforts to close the achievement gap, I appreciate Mr. Schmidt's presentation on listing all these strategies put in place. I think there's a lot going on. Yet at the same time, I've been dedicating time to study our district report card. And the district report card detail for 1718 shows us that there is a lot of work to do. And I don't see clearly the connection between the report card and the slides that were presented here. For example, the latest report card says that American Indian or Alaska Native students perform below proficient at a 62.1%. Asian students at a 67% below proficient. For Black or African-American, 80.2%. And this is for English Language Arts supplemental data. Hispanic and Latino students, 65.9% perform below proficient level. That is really concerning. Those numbers are hidden behind the larger, hidden, you know, under the metadata. So I would like to not just follow students longitudinally, but I would like to have the opportunity to know what mechanisms are in place to understand what are the specific plans within each building in place to help these students. I was a classroom teacher. I was also a school principal. And I know that there is no one else that knows better the students than the teacher. I'd like to know how much input those teachers are providing to this process. I'd like to know how much opportunities are given to the teachers to coordinate with other teachers that are facing the same challenges in neighboring buildings and at the district level so that the wealth of knowledge is shared. I'd like also to receive more information about to what extent principals are facilitating this process and what mechanisms are in place for principals to coordinate with each other, to, to target these common areas that are present throughout the district, not just in one specific building. That would give us, I think, the opportunity to understand our district as a living organism that is trying to move forward in specific ways. I think that these efforts to help the students are not, that are not being successful in our school district, needs to be tied to our priorities in terms of where we put our money, the little money that we have. Otherwise, I would not feel very comfortable. Probably more expenses.
Yeah, well said. Thank you. And we're getting, we're getting, Secretary Iverson, you're starting our list, I'm assuming, of things that board members are saying we'd like to request or we'd like to maybe meet about. That's good. That's what we want out of this. So Commissioner Harder.
Well, as a member of the Budget Committee, I feel a degree of responsibility for our great turnout here tonight. As Chair of the Budget Committee, I feel a special responsibility for this turnout. And I'm actually heartened by this turnout and really pleased to see the level of engagement that we're, that we're getting on this issue. This is something we've attempted to achieve in different ways, and we will continue to attempt, if I have anything to say about it, which is to understand staff desire on this question and on others that have to do with compensation and with other things that affect the staff working life. It's, it's something I've felt strongly about since I started on the board. And, you know, we've, we've made different attempts at it. We haven't, we clearly haven't gotten there yet in terms of being able to get that board connection with staff and to collaborate on problem solving. And that's something that is very important to me. I think about the concerns I have for this district. And morale and budget are both right at the top, and they're intimately linked together. And from my point of view, the way forward for this is together, together. And that, that means a dialogue. And so I feel very strongly about that on the OPEB question and really quite a few questions. I'd like to see more of that. I think that's a bit of a theme here that we're hearing, that collaboration.
I want to give feedback as to what I think of the presentations on close session tonight. I believe this is the kind of information I'd like to see. The only thing is that we're starting to talk about one out of the five priority. And in the example that we are presenting here will lead to later decision that influence my decisions. And imagine if I were to make a decision tonight based on seeing just one picture, and that picture is achievement gap. An example of what I'm talking about is ensuring culturally responsive classroom. Let me take it back. We talked about the district identifying four things, cultural relevance, instruction, hope, Monge history and culture course, Spanish immersion. If you look at this, it almost looked like we're trying to create a new opportunity. And we also try to address gap. I want to see bigger picture, what are our new opportunity that we are trying to lead the district, not manage, not trying to fix, but to lead. So tonight, if I were to go ahead, give the approval to our door immersion committee to move forward because Spanish immersion has been identified by the district as one way to address the gap. If I make that decision independently without seeing the rest of the district plan for the remainder of four priority, tonight I made a yes decision. Next meeting, I'll make another yes decision. Next meeting, I make another yes decision. We run out of money. I'm going to give you another example. I like to believe that I live with the decision I made, the promise that I made. We all saw tonight that our veteran staff, our staff that came to the educational setting, knowing that education doesn't really provide a whole lot of money, but it all compensated when you look at the salary, when you look at the benefit, I mean, when you look at the environment, some staff, most of the staff, decide to come to O'Clare to teach, to work. But today, revenue pressure pushed us to make some critical decisions. It's either we follow the decision with the educator before us, the leader before us, they made it a decision to entice, to accommodate educator to this district. But because we were faced with financial situation, we have to make decision. So it's not about us, it's not about us being humane, not being humane about people that we employ, but it's because of the lack of long-term thinking and planning. I'd like to see in the, in the next meeting, to see more example of what planning, long-term, long-range planning will include. And we pick perhaps one to three item out of each priority to really talk about, knowing that you can only do a few, knowing that you picked this, you suffered that, but we had a good talk. So tonight is the beginning of seeing the big picture, and I thank for that.
Thank you. So, so far, I'm hearing long-range planning, assessment of the strategic plan, current progress in all of our, in all of the areas, collaborating with staff on problem solving, engaging staff, following students longitudinally, looking at what specific plans are in place for our students who are disproportionately impacted in the school district in various ways, looking at what input educators are providing in that process, gaining a better understanding. Commissioner Harder.
I'd like to just follow up with what Commissioner Yu said with the idea, and it's a, it's a theme we've had for a long time on the board, but I don't know that we've really achieved it, of trying to contextualize these decisions that we make into a holistic picture. And OPEB is a great example. You know, from my point of view, we may be faced as a district with the unavoidable situation where in order to maintain our fund balance, if we decide that's what we want to do, so far, that's the default decision. It's not the only possible way forward. Another way forward is, let's let it, let's let it go to zero. Nobody seems to know what happens when it hits zero or when it goes below. Maybe we should find out. But the, the holistic picture of, you know, if we decide for whatever reason, through a process that hopefully is collaborative, that, that we do need to make these cuts and that the staff will need to bear some portion of that, I want to make sure that we're approaching it collaboratively and holistically. Meaning, okay, OPEB is one way to do it. There's probably six other ways to do it, too. We may not, we have some control over the size that we target. We have that control as a board. We could say zero is how much we're going to target. We could say something more than zero. We also have some control over the shape, and especially when we talk about the shape that it takes. And when we talk about alternative ways of thinking about it, rather than cutting, but maybe rearranging, I want to make sure all the ideas are on the table and that we're contextualizing the OPEB question with the other compensation questions that we have. And that, that takes time. And we've already spent a great deal of time on OPEB. And there's, there are different pressures, a lot of different pressures, including the budget itself, which if you watch the fund balance go down, we don't have, you know, it takes five years for this OPEB plan that was most recently on the table. And through the discussions, it took five years to realize savings from that. Well, if you project forward, we don't have five years. We don't have five years before we hit zero if we continue at the rate we're continuing. And so we need, as a board, to face this question of what are we going to do about the fund balance? What is our position on the fund balance? And, and we really need to be contextualizing all of our budget decisions. So I think.
I thank you for that, Commissioner Harder. I, I think that if you compare us, other entities that might have, you know, we have our, for example, our five-year capital improvement plan, but we do not have a long-range plan in terms of educational programs or other initiatives in the school district. So looking at, towards the future, some sort of a long-range plan in that way, I think, would be helpful. I think this is a helpful conversation, though, to get, to get a good handle on the kind of data that our board requires and the context of the conversations that we want to have in the coming months. I think that's really helpful. Do other board members have feedback at this time? They want to add? Anything else they'd like to say? Okay. I think we have some good ideas of some things to plan. So perhaps it can be included in the board's self-assessment or at a future meeting as a work session. So, thank you. So that brings us then out of our work session and to our consent resolution agenda, our regular order of business. So all of these items will be acted on with one vote without discussion unless if a board member would like to pull an item to be voted on separately. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December 3, 2018, the financial report for November 2018, acceptance of gifts in the amount of $26,546.82 for the period of November 1, 2018 through November 30, 2018, payment of all bills in the amount of $6,109,859.63, and net payroll in the amount of $3,543,532.69 for the period of November 1, 2018 through November 30, 2018, the human resources and employment report, and new appointments, reappointments of representatives to the learning environments and partnerships committee, and the demographic trends and facility planning committee. So I would entertain a motion to approve 8.2 through 8.7.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Then we'll do a roll call vote for this one.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambuck Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
And Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Okay. That brings us then to our individually considered resolutions. The first is scheduling the 2019 summer/fall meetings as a board. Have all the members of the board been able to read the meeting dates on board docs? And are there any questions regarding the scheduled, preliminary scheduled meeting dates? dates? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to adopt the 2019 summer/fall meeting schedule as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay. That motion carries. That takes us then to item 9.2, which is the dual immersion preliminary site approval and dual immersion application process approval. So I'm not sure if there is a presentation tonight regarding this item or not, and I'm looking for.
There's just a short one, just to bring you back up to speed where we left off last time.
Okay.
All right. Good evening. We are here to follow up on our presentation from two weeks past, to ask the board to engage in next steps on the dual immersion program. We've spent the last about three years now updating and presenting the board on the progress, on the progress in different levels of research that we've been able to find relative to a Spanish dual immersion program to be launched here in the Eau Claire School District.
All right. Hello, everyone. This is my fifth time speaking at the board, and I've never had this audience before, so thanks for coming. Just to remind the board, this was our proposed implementation timeline since we've started this project. If we plan to implement with kindergarten this next fall, we really do need to stick with when we would ask the board to vote on certain parts of this project, just to make sure that we are fully able to have staffing and everything up and ready by 2019. We shared with you the application process that the committee had chose to follow last time based off of research from other districts that have successful dual immersion programs. I did add to this, there was questions about the barriers of step one and how we would address those barriers. I talked about that last time, but I just kind of put it up there for you as well.
Thank you.
And then I also added on there, there was questions about like parent orientation and meeting, and really talking about how creating that building atmosphere where families all feel welcome, especially if this may not be the homeschool for many of the families in this program. And then we also shared with you the two locations, Longfellow and Locust Lane, both have building capacity and some of the reasons why both those buildings would be a good fit for a Spanish dual immersion program.
So next steps tonight, we've updated the board and results of the information that we've gathered from different listening sessions and and things of that nature. Tonight, we would ask that the board moves forward to help us determine a location, act on the application, and then our next steps then would be to narrow down the transportation costs and then begin to meet with interested folks in the community to update on what the lottery process would look like, what the application process would look like, and then outreach it to interested stakeholders, both the community support and at the specific building or buildings the board would choose to select.
You might notice, especially you, Joe, I did bump up lottery and approved budget impact to February and not March, just because when you think, I keep reinforcing all the work that has to be done once we have staff in place with curriculum writing and determining appropriate resources, I really feel if we're going to move forward with this program, we should try to bump up that budget impact vote into February, just to make sure we can have everything in place.
So the listening sessions would be all next month? Okay. How many would you look to have?
We would probably do three, like we did with the, you know, an evening, a Saturday, and then like a morning or a lunch one.
Okay. Is that it for the presentation, or are there more?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you for the update. I know we had talked about, obviously, which is reflected here, separating out the lottery process, separating out the budget process, transportation process, so those will be approved at a later time, and that these would be approved for the purposes of planning and information. So do board members have questions? Yes, Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
And I understand that we're doing this in order for us to find out the interest in the program and that sort of thing, but I'd be more comfortable in the context of this agenda item, or if we do act on this tonight, where it says, request board action and vote, it is really a non-binding vote because ultimately, we're not sure when we look at the context of our budget and those things that we're going to discuss as a board, this this may not be the piece that rises to the top. And I, I, when it says, this action will vote, I just, people need to know it's a, if we vote tonight, it's non-binding in the sense that that doesn't say this is going forward. Correct?
Yes. Yeah, the way, the two motions that the board could take tonight, one would be regarding approval of a preliminary site with focus on preliminary, and then also the application process, which is, of course, just an application process, preliminary, yeah. So the, there's nothing, there's nothing about tonight's votes that would require us to vote a certain way in February. That would, that's a separate decision we'd have to make.
Correct. We would, sorry, President Luganbill, we would just ask for codification of a location so we can best inform the board on transportation costs.
Right.
So that, that's a valuable piece of the action that we're asking for tonight.
Right. Yeah, so is there a motion to approve a preliminary site for this? Yes, Commissioner Torres?
Perhaps strategically, thinking strategically, Longfellow as a location is something that would present the project as viable, as more viable than Locust Lane. Perhaps on a year two or year three, we can add a different location, but beginning in Longfellow would give us the opportunity to get started.
Okay. Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
And I had another question, again, as the conversation we had in our work session. As you look at the timeline for this, and we have year one, year two, year three, I, as a board member, would really like to see what that looks costed out and what that impact would be on over time, especially if that's what we're looking at with other programs as well.
If we, if we knew the transportation costs and all that, would, is that something you'd be able to compile?
Correct. If you remember from the last presentation, we gave some ballpark estimates with a location agreed upon that would let us more focus the transportation cost, correct?
Okay. Was that Longfellow? The estimates were done against Longfellow, is this kind of an assumption?
He gave us estimates for both sites.
Sure. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And so if Longfellow is sort of emerging as a, if you preferred, is, and what is, how has the dual immersion committee worked with the principal and staff at Longfellow thus far, and what's their general take on it?
So both of the principals at Locust Lane and Longfellow are part of the committee, so they've been coming to the committee meetings just to kind of stay up to date with where the process is at. Both principals have said they'd like Dave and I to come speak to their staff, but not until after board has determined that their building would be, the building it would be in, just so we can educate their staff more of what it would look like.
And would you characterize the kind of enthusiasm on the principals? I haven't heard anything, so I don't.
Yeah, Sarah and Laura have both been very active members of it. So, no, they they both welcome the program in their building.
Okay. Dr. Harder?
I met with the Longfellow staff last week, and we talked a little bit about the implications of having Longfellow named as the location for the school. I think there's a lot of interest. There were a lot of questions about whether or not students in their attendance area might have kind of first dibs on attending that school and what would the application process be. So I think clarifying that application process and clarifying the site, you know, then we could begin to work with staff more.
Commissioner Vu?
Being that. Being that two sites were identified, what is the pro and con of the other site? If anyone knows?
Space. Both those sites had enough classrooms to hold a KFI program. None of our other elementary sites currently have capacity to hold a program. And we talked about, we didn't want to split the program up between different buildings just based off of, like, the training of staff and an administrator and the whole social-emotional piece of students bouncing around from different elementary schools.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
And Commissioner Vu, we tied the additional space usage for this program back to demo and trends as well because these were the buildings that had space when they talked about shifting students as well. So there's some impact there as well that you have to take into consideration.
Okay. I don't see any other lights. Are any board members interested in making a motion at this time? I could entertain a motion if you'd like. Okay. I would entertain a motion then to approve Longfellow Elementary School as the preliminary site.
I'll move to.
Okay. And you are, will you second it, Commissioner Vu?
I will second it.
Okay. So we have that, and we can do a voice vote on that one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no? Okay. Any other conversation, discussion, questions regarding the application process? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the dual immersion application process. Someone would, would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Oh, yes, Commissioner Bika?
I'm going to make the same point, that I'd like to see an application process that was far less involved, much more nimble, and I'm thinking of families, an English learner that might move into the district partway through the academic year and will be denied a spot in the program.
Can I just respond to that? Part of the committee's work is, most districts set up a dual immersion program, and we talked about closing the achievement gap. When a Spanish-speaking English learner comes into the program, that is a program priority offered to the family, and you figure that into your lottery when you're offering spaces because that would be, when you think of research-based, what best-fit program would we have to offer that student? That family would be offered that program, like Madison, that's how they structure their program with their lottery and how they focused on that being the program that would close the achievement gap with a Spanish-speaking EL student.
Yes, Commissioner Bika?
I understand that, but my concern is about barriers that could exist all throughout the process that would keep a student from, or a family from being able to plug in at any one of these given steps. I see a lot of potential complications.
The only really additional step that we're asking is for them to attend a meeting. The application is something that every family does already, and the screening can be via phone. And then the other two are really step four and five are district step. And step six, most buildings have a back-to-school night or some sort of new family orientation in the fall anyway. So really, I feel like the only additional step we're adding is step one. And the committee did feel really strongly that if families are going to make an educated choice for a six-year commitment, that they should participate in a meeting to really understand what they're committing to. So that, the committee felt pretty strongly about having that as a part of the application process.
So I guess, Commissioner Bika, are there particular areas of these steps where you feel there maybe is a potential for them, for challenges more than others of this?
I think it's fine to call the questions.
You do? Okay. Perhaps it would be prudent for you both to work with Commissioner Bika on this because I think you have a good perspective. I mean, I think it might, and if board members are okay with it, I think having maybe a conversation with them might be helpful because I think that what you're getting at is, cannot be overstated in terms of how crucial it is because we've seen it with other choice programs in the district, that it is disproportionate, and it is difficult for for certain groups of, in the district to access and to navigate. And so, I mean, if if that's something that you'd be willing to do, I think it would bring value to the process, but certainly, it's up to you.
I don't, I think I'll participate just as a regular board member, and I've stated it as often as, as, as well as I can.
Okay. All right. Okay. Seeing nothing else, then, the motion on the table is to approve the application process for the dual immersion program. We have a second, and we will do a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? Okay. So that carries six to one. And that takes us then to the OPEB discussion. Thank you.
Hi. There we are. Tonight, I have a short presentation, and we have some time for board discussion. I'm going to just wanted to remind everybody here that my report is based upon recommendations from the Budget Development Committee, and so you will see that it's from the board members on the Budget Development Committee and what we've talked about recently. There's been a lot of comments about the fact that OPEB hasn't been talked about for long enough, and we're not ready to make a decision. And I wanted to share with the entire board that this discussion has been ongoing since prior to 2011. We shared with the Budget Development Committee at the last board meeting, the number of meetings and the number of scenarios and the number of things that had been reviewed by Lyndemont, as well as the Budget Development Committee. And so to say that this hasn't been discussed for a long time, I disagree. When we look at where we're currently at, our current unfunded liability is $125 million. There was a comment, and public comment, that those numbers hadn't been shared before, and I disagree. If you go back to my April 18, 2018 presentation, the first cash flow scenario talks about our current benefits and what our current liability is, and that was $112 million. And that has been shared throughout all of the listening sessions, as well in every time we talk about it in budget development. The piece that's missing that we purposely haven't been talking about is the stipends, and the stipends is that 20, 12.5 million. And that's because Budget Development wanted to focus on the health and dental piece of our current unfunded liability. We also wanted to remind the board that this OPEB liability and benefit is in addition to the contributions that employer, that that the district, as well as employees, make to the Wisconsin Retirement Benefit System. And so this benefit is in addition to what they're receiving from the state. It does impact approximately 650 of our 1,400 employees, and that is almost half of our employees. Our current age, average age of retirement is 57 years old, and this benefit lasts until they reach Medicare eligibility, which is currently age 65. If we, if we break this down by the number of people, that's about a $200,000 benefit per person when we take the total 125 and divide it by 650. Budget Development Committee met with actuaries, we reviewed options, we determined goals, and things to reduce the OPEB liability. The focus of all of our meetings, since the decision was made in November of 2016 to make this a priority, has been on this topic specifically. I wanted to remind the board that, starting in November 2016, we made that our priority, and that discussion had been put on hold since 2014, and it was due to the compensation study. So diligently, this committee has worked on OPEB from 2016 December until April 2018, when was my first report to the school board with the proposed scenarios that you were, had a chance to review. All right. I want to remind, the committee asked me to remind everybody of the goals that we discussed. We are looking at a plan that was sustainable, equitable, and also values retention. We know that our current plan is not sustainable due to that tie to the health and dental plan and the plan that they have, as well as the cost. And they also want to recognize the service that the employees have given to the Eau Claire School District. If we look at our timeline once again, from that first presentation in April, there's been many conversations with the board, as well as employees, for the last six months. On May 7, there was an update to the board as far as OPEB, and I believe that was one of the first times we talked about Scenario B1. All of the listening sessions did not talk about Scenario B1 because that came about after the first, and we didn't want the information shared in the listening sessions to be different than what the board had heard. And then I think you'll remember, two weeks ago, we talked about OPEB and what were the next steps, and Budget Development met the next day and had some conversations again about what is the, what is the, the recommendation for tonight's meeting with a potential implementation date of July of 2019. I just wanted to remind the board of the historical costs. And we just really looked at, for the comparison of the last two years, this does have a budget impact. And so if you look at in 2017, 2018, our OPEB costs were $5.8 million out of our annual budget. Our budget this year is $6.7 million. That's an increase of $882,000. Now, this year, you know, was what it's like. We don't know what 1920 is gonna look like because we don't have health and dental rates. We are out to bid right now for our health and dental insurance. And so we're not gonna have that information until March or April. But again, with this plan being tied to that, we can't even predict what does 1920 look like right now. Other school districts that we've talked to have had some significant increases. We've been very fortunate to have a cap on our health and dental insurance for the last four years. We don't know if that's likely to happen again going into the 1920 school year. So Budget Development discussed, even as recently as two weeks ago, changing the structure to Option B1, capping the health and dental rates at the 2018-19 rates, or to do nothing. Again, B1 wasn't shared at the listening sessions because the board asked for that information after the initial presentation. As questions came up in the listening sessions, that information was shared and we talked specifically about the differences and why did, why did Scenario B1 come about and what was different about it. The capping the health and dental was removed as an option early in the discussion because it didn't meet the Budget Development Committee's goal for savings. It was presented again to Budget Development and I was asked to bring it back to the school board. And so that's how that became an option again there. So with that, we'd like to have the board have some discussion on what are the next steps for OPEB for the Oakley School District.
Commissioner Harder.
Yeah. So again, as Chair of the Budget Committee, I want to welcome you all. We, I want to explain a little bit about how we got to this place with this many people here. You have your own perspective on it, I have mine. From my perspective, we had a meeting on December 4 of the Budget Development Committee on the topic of OPEB again. And Mark Goings was there, who's joined us for so many of these and gave public comment and talked about some options that involved no change structurally, unlike the options that we've been talking about. They're not structurally different than what we have today. But they involve a cap. And it's not the first time we've talked about that. Whether it's a cap on growth, whether that's maybe a 5% cap on growth, won't grow more than 5%, won't grow more than 3% is another option. Won't grow more than 0% is an option we talked about. And I myself looked at that one and said, well, that represents about 10 million savings, based on a rough guess, over 30 years to the district, compared to an expectation of 50 million savings for the plan that we talked about with, in the listening sessions with staff. Less savings to the district, less of a burden on the staff, brought to us, you know, in a rather informal context, but, oh, isn't that interesting? And I was so glad to see it because, as I've said, I'm really interested in collaborating on this problem. And so in some of, I will say, I certainly felt this, in my eagerness, I embraced this idea and said, we need to get this in front of the full board and let's talk about it. And I believe I made the case for that pretty strongly. And that's eventually how it got on the agenda here. And so now here we are, talking about it. And, you know, I was talking to Chris about this earlier today and she made a comment, democracy is messy. And I think this is an example of that. But I think it's also kind of a beautiful thing too, you know. It's, I will say though, that I'm sorry if the way that we rolled this out has added to what I know is a difficult morale situation. We've heard about it in different forms for a while now and we hear you. And I apologize myself if I contributed to that with how this, how this rolled out. It was not our intent to jam anything through. It was our intent to bring other options to the table and recognize that there are other ways to approach this problem and to broaden our perspectives on how we're approaching it. It was also, I will say, always my intention, to move us towards a deeper conversation with staff on this topic before we make a decision. And so, I'll say, I just said that once again, I've said it a few times now. But I think we as a board here have some, we need to take a step back from OPEB to some degree. I'm gonna reiterate a couple of things that I've already said, but I want, they're important. There's a question of what is the dollar figure? We have a budget problem, everybody knows that. We've squeezed, you've felt the squeezes. We talk about the 22% of the budget, which is non-compensation money. And we talk about the 78% of the budget, which is about staff compensation. And we've squeezed and squeezed. This is the picture as we kind of have it right now, is we've squeezed and squeezed on the 22%. And we've felt it a lot this year. Everybody has. We can't, we're squeezing on that to make up for a shortfall in the 78, really. That's one way to look at it. And it's a disproportional squeeze. You can only get so much out of the 22%. And you could take half of the 22%, it's not gonna make up for half of the shortfall in 78%. You see, there's a disproportion there. And so it's just as kind of a simplistic math, but it's, it's a real math, I think, that I, and that's why it gets me to the conclusion, wow, if we're gonna try and preserve the fund balance, which, and that's an if now. It's never been an if for me before this week, never. Even considered it as an if. But we need to now consider this as a board, as an if, I think. This is new. If we want to preserve the fund balance, what level do we want to preserve it at? What is the right level? What's too low? And if we need to cut into staff, the staff portion, the 78% portion, if we need to somehow cut into that, what is the amount? What is the appropriate amount? And of course importantly, what form should those cuts take? What form that can be equitable, that can be, is there even a form that can be acceptable to the staff under these circumstances? So to me, that's how I see the problem. I'm not, I wish I could now go on to talk about solutions, but I think that's, I see it as our, kind of our job as a full board. This goes beyond, this is a problem that goes beyond what the Budget Committee alone can solve, so.
I agree. Thank you, Commissioner Harder. I want to first thank the, all the folks who took the time out to come here tonight, or email us, or write us. I know that for some of you, you said you've been here for a decade or more and you have never written to the board before now. And so I wish you were reaching out in happier circumstances, but it's, it's good to have your engagement nonetheless. At the October meeting, when OPEB was last discussed as a board before the, with the current options that had been, that had gone through listening sessions prior to the new ones tonight, that October meeting, many of us on the board, I believe the majority of board members from looking back at video, said that we really wanted to have a deeper conversation. We wanted to see some preliminary reports from the Revenue Committee. We wanted to see where we sit with school funding, particularly because while there had, there's been a sense of urgency that's been shared in when proposals have been brought to us as a board. But we know that with the proposals that were at the listening sessions, there are not anticipated savings with any of the original options for about five or six years. And we know that the challenges that we have fiscally are current and need solutions now. But, you know, I appreciate the work that's been done through our business office. They have done what the Budget Development Committee and the board have tasked them to do. It's a difficult, it's difficult work. Everything from hosting the listening sessions to answering emails. And it's hundreds upon hundreds of emails and inquiries that they followed up on. So I want to recognize that. All of that being said, the, the holdup for me tonight is that the proposals that were brought at the last meeting have not gone through that public process. And, you know, not only have we not had listening sessions regarding capping, we do not have concrete numbers about the anticipated savings. Ultimately, you know, the data being shared with us is off of last year's staff. The data that's being shared is without knowledge of what our rates are going to be. There are a lot of ifs, there are a lot of unanswered questions. So I think that's important to note. But I think it's also equally important to note that with that one option that was shared, it amounts to about a $300,000 a year savings for the school district. And I feel that energy needs to be continually spent in an increasing way on looking at third-source funding and implementing new revenue as a school district. Because, you know, looking at ways we can make up the difference in open enrollment, looking at ways that we can streamline our system, expand partnerships with other entities, expand partnerships with other sectors. That's not a fantasy idea. It's not a pie-in-the-sky idea. And we've seen incredible success in school districts across this country, and even some in Wisconsin, as far as implementing those kinds of things for third-source funding. That can certainly make up $300,000 a year, but many, many, in many instances, they make up more than that. So in my opinion, that is where a lot of our energy can really be directed. And I look at the room tonight, folks who are passionate, and I would love to see that passion and energy be harnessed, to look at that, to look at what can we do for our future as far as third-source funding, as far as revenue is concerned. We have, I've called them this time and time again since I was first selected, we have an incredible brain trust in our school district, not only of our 1,400 staff, but of our 11,300 students. There are incredible ideas out there. Just go to a random classroom in the school, go to a DECA club, I mean, go hang out with these students and you're gonna see the kind of ideas that they have, the kind of passion that they have, and the entrepreneurial spirit that they have, which ultimately is, I think, what we really need to tap into as a school district more and more. But, you know, ultimately, I want to see the board continue its conversations about these topics in an inclusive way, in a measured way, looking at the big picture. And just like what we talked about with the work session, this all connects, making sure that all of our dollars are being allocated in a way that meets our goals, maximizes resources, supports our priorities, you know, continuing those conversations as a district about cost-saving measures and efficiencies. We need to continue that conversation. But we also need to continue our work through the Revenue Committee. And in the coming months, bring some concrete recommendations to the board. And we need to look towards new educational programming that will help mitigate our net loss in open enrollment dollars. Continuing our advocacy at the state level, remain vigilant as advocates as a new budget is developed for public schools in our state. Harness our great number of connections as a school district personally to the governor-elect and to his transition team and to his new incoming cabinet. That is a distinction that very few school districts in our state can say they have. And if we do not tap into that, we are, we're a sorry group. We're gonna be a sorry group. I think we'd be remiss if we didn't pay attention to that. I want to do all of those things. And I know that we can as a school district, as a school board. Ultimately, as far as tonight is concerned, that question mark, it is my very strong opinion that we should not make a decision about a topic of this magnitude, about, about options that have not gone to our staff, but also without first having a full awareness of where we sit. Having a clear idea of all of the options and considerations in front of us. So I feel, and I don't feel like we're, like we're that far from getting there. I feel like we're about in the middle of the process. I do not feel like we're at the finish line yet though. And I feel like the consideration of changes to OPEB or any of that at this time would be unwise and premature. So to me, personally, waiting before making this decision, putting together a really good plan for listening sessions about these, but also planning how we as a school district, over the next six, eight, 12 months, are going to deeply engage our employees, deeply engage our committees, our teams, get the Revenue Committee and the Budget Committee talking, get all of this in front of the board, perhaps do what we did with the compensation plan where we had compensation committees that engaged our staff, perhaps bringing them around the table, not just to react to proposals, but to help us develop them in the first place. Because we had, for example, great suggestions that came from Mark Goings. And they were unsolicited, but he provides them. And I love it when people provide unsolicited advice. But ultimately, we should solicit that advice as a school district, moving forward. So that's where I'm at. And I'd love to hear where other board members are at, but personally, I would like, I would like to see our board postpone any vote on OPEB. And I would like to see us develop a several-month employee engagement plan with study committees, with in-depth, with an in-depth look, look at revenue, look at savings. And ultimately, you know, our school district historically relies on, we have consultants that provide us information. They're good people. They're great people. It's great to have consultants. But we have 1,400 other people in our district and we could consult you too. Because ultimately, I feel you are educational leaders. You are leaders in our district. And you've been here, some of you have been here for longer than I've been alive. And that's a beautiful thing. That's an absolutely beautiful frickin' thing. And we need to engage you. We need to engage you in a deep way and in a meaningful way. So that's where I'm currently at with this discussion. But if further, yes, Commissioner Humbleboil.
I agree with you, President Luganville, to postpone this and put together what we need in order to have that deep conversation and to involve our school district. I want to tell everybody out here though too, since you're all here, is the Legislative Fiscal Bureau just came out with their recommendations for school funding, derived from all the people that testified at the Blue Ribbon hearings, of which the Wisconsin Public Education Network was at every single one. It did videos to document the number of people and what the issues were. The Legislative Fiscal Bureau for the state, which is a nonpartisan group, has just put together a document, taking each of the issues and coming up with what could be used to alleviate that and to fix school funding. We're going to provide it in your newsletter. Please read it, get engaged, become engaged in what that looks like because that is the most important thing also that we should be doing as a district, as educators, and as anybody who cares about public schools.
Are there any other board members who'd like to speak to this? I don't see any other lights, so, oh, yeah, Commissioner Harder.
Yeah, I mean, if it...
I have a motion, but if you want to...
If it wasn't clear, I support the idea of delaying this and undertaking a study, a multi, if it has to be multi-month. And the reason I think it might be multi-month is again, I think it needs to be holistic. Now, we may be able to come to a quicker conclusion on OPEB just because of pre-work that's done. It's possible. I don't know what that conclusion's gonna be. I wouldn't pre-guess it. But the point is, we need to lay out a holistic look. And that's why it may take a little longer.
Yeah. So I, seeing other lights, I would entertain a motion to postpone any vote on other post-employment benefits, OPEB changes, and undertake a multi-month employee engagement process. Second. Okay, and let's do, is there any discussion about that motion? Okay, then we'll do a roll call vote. Yes. The motion is to postpone any vote on other post-employment benefits, OPEB Yes, the motion is to postpone any vote on other post-employment benefit changes and undertake a multi-month employee engagement plan.
Just for clarification, do we want to go one more step?
What do you have in mind?
Does that begin engage a more holistic plan, could it be a timeline on it? Could it be parameter around it? Or could it be delayed indefinitely?
Well, are you thinking, like, 12 months? Or...
I am thinking about back to October 8th, when we said delay this discussion, and we did delay until now, but we have not discussed, and new thing came up. So we were reactive instead of being proactive.
If I can, I'd like to make a case for the delay that we made, which is, when we look at these, well, it's gone now, but the three goals, valuing retention is, I mean, that's been very high, it's last on this list, but it's very high on my personal list, as I've been going through this process and spending two years on it. And, you know, we anticipated one response, and we got a very different response, and then, that's when the delay came. And to me, we need the time to work through different options, and that's, but I agree that it needs to have a timeframe on it. This has been described to me, and I've kind of picked it up as a thought, OPEB is an open wound, and it's, frankly, that's part of, was part of my eagerness in embracing a plan that came up in the last meeting and trying to bring it to the board to discuss. As long as it's open, it's a lingering problem, and I don't want to solve it by ending it with a bad decision, but also, it needs to close, it needs to close. And so, I very much agree with the idea that they should have a hard limit on it.
Would board members want to see like a 12-month timeframe as far as an employee engagement plan, or leave the motion open as is? Commissioner Torres?
I would like to suggest that the thinking starts in the spring, an intensive thinking process during the spring, that will give us ideas and alternatives to start working on the budget for next year. That'll give us also some time to figure out our priorities, right? But if we, I mean, delaying the decision tonight, that doesn't mean that we don't need to talk about it right away. So, since we see there is a lot of energy in the room, and lots of ideas being shared through different media, then we should embrace and take the wave intensively.
Yeah, so I think, following up on that, perhaps as far as the employee engagement plan and what that can look like, perhaps we can put that on our agenda for our next board meeting, and put together a timeline, and then we're just moving forward with it and following up? Okay. So we'll do that for the, yep. Yeah, Commissioner Hambuch Boyle?
Maybe the timeline can be part of our interaction with our staff as we go through this, and maybe that'll become apparent after first couple sessions we put people together.
Yep. Okay. So Secretary Iverson, would you mind rereading the motion on the floor?
That the school board postpone vote on other post-employment benefits, OPEB changes, and undertake a multi-month employee engagement plan.
Okay. So is there any other discussion regarding the motion? Okay, then we will do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Vu?
Ding.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambuch Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
And Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
So there's more on that to come. And that takes us, then, we're going to adjourn to committee. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And we will be talking first about the recommended 2019-2020 school year calendar. Who's up for the calendar? Is it Ms. Marks?
You're going to walk slow.
You're going to walk slow. Okay.
You should say, wait, stop, there's a hole.
Yeah, there's more fun.
Tell them there's more work dates.
I'd ask that you keep your conversations to a minimum, because we still have a lot of work to do tonight, so thank you. So first, we have Ms. Marks to talk about the recommended 2019-20 school year calendar.
Thank you, Patty. Okay, so, you have before you the proposed 2019-2020 school year calendar. As we've presented each year, the new calendar for the following year, the calendar basically mirrors the year before, we roll it over with all of the same components as the previous year. Not new to anybody is the fact that we reach out to staff and parents through different surveys to ask about the calendar, since this has been put in place for several years. We continue through that feedback to get positive input about the calendar. This year, there was a modification that came forward through the Family Advisory Council. So there is one modification to this year's calendar that's been different than in the past, and so, I'm not sure, Patty, if you're able to scroll. Okay, thank you. So, the modification has to do with the January High School PDIP Day. And so, this year, and in our subsequent years, there's been a high school PDIP Day in January that existed only for the high school staff and not the elementary and middle school staff. And then, in May, there was an elementary and middle school staff PDIP Day in which the high school staff was in session with students. And so, the families made the recommendation that we change that, and that we move the high school PDIP Day in January to match the May elementary and middle school PDIP Day, so that families have all of their students off at the same time. And then, once we did that, that we also moved the May PDIP Day, which was originally scheduled for May 15th, that we moved that to the 22nd, so it coincides with the holiday of the 25th, because otherwise, there are two times in May which families have a modified week. And so, with that, that's the only modification to the calendar, which is unique and unusual compared to the other years. Otherwise, we continue to have 189 teacher contract days, 170 elementary and middle school student days, 172 high school days. Calendar continues to absorb instructional minutes for inclement weather days, and then a fifth if we need to utilize the April PDIP Day. We always reserve that one as a fifth in the event that we have a crazy winter and we need additional days to make up. So, April's PDIP Day is always reserved for a potential makeup day for students and staff if we should need it. Otherwise, other than that one modification, everything continues to be the same. Any questions?
I have a question and potentially a suggested change. In the month of December, the break, the break from December 23rd until New Year's Day, looking at scrolling a little bit in January, looking at that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays off, I feel like that Thursday and Friday are going to be super low attendance days in the school district. So to me, it would make sense, and I don't know, perhaps there are specific reasons for this, but I noticed we have kind of random off Fridays on February 21st and April 10th. And I'm wondering if it would make sense to get rid of those off days and have the winter break be a two-week break. And my thinking behind that is I think it would have our families be less likely to take a break later in the year and increase our attendance, and potentially be a nice morale, a nice morale piece for our families and also for our staff. So I'm just wondering if that would make sense. Commissioner Klinkhammer?
I appreciate what you're thinking about doing there. Just personally, as someone with children, or having gone through that, I know by January 2nd, kids are ready to be back in school. That's a decent break that they have, but then, winter gets a little longer on here, so they're ready to have a little more time off in February. So I would think carefully about clumping the break too much and not having a little space between those two things.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm open to whatever people think. I just thought of it when I looked at it, that historically, we used to have a two-week break in winter, and that kind of changed after a while, and thought that might be nice to bring back, but I'm fine with whatever the board thinks.
As a previous student in the district, I remember our two-week winter breaks, and I loved them. I don't know how my parents felt about them.
Yeah.
I think as a parent, you now know how they felt about them.
You're right. Yeah. Commissioner Vu?
I wasn't sure if this been looked at, but I just thought I'd ask. We talked quite a bit about PD needs. Has this schedule been accommodating for PD from the staff's lens? To what extent this schedule's been helping our staff?
Mr. Schmidt, did you want to respond to that from the PD end?
It allows us to do district-wide, like the writing project, the literacy within the supportive learning environments. If we didn't have that time, we wouldn't be able to accomplish that delivery. So it's provided us that opportunity to provide culturally sponsored practices within that supportive learning environment that we wouldn't be able to do without that, to be able to place.
And from the recruitment standpoint, I can tell you that other districts have pieces of professional development that they require staff to do outside of the established calendar, outside of the workday. Oftentimes, that PD is associated with steps that they need to take to be able to advance on the salary schedule, and so having this calendar built the way that it is so that that's all embedded, has been very beneficial from the standpoint that staff can have that professional development built into the calendar and have it be on days when students aren't, you know, they don't have to miss time with students. So that piece has been beneficial. We've been working pretty diligently on expanding those PD opportunities for hourly staff. Now that we've had the calendar in place for several years and expanding the opportunities for the hourly staff, to have more robust options and opportunities during those days, so that piece is getting better as we go.
Thank you. I think we've worked hard in getting to where we are right now, and I just want to make sure we are on the right track, so thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have comments on this? Okay. I think if it makes sense to leave the 21st and 10th other free days in February and April, that's fine, I just thought, I wondered if all the kids in Eau Claire might remember that one day when they're eligible voters, and they might, okay. Well, then we'll move on, unless anyone in the community wants to speak to it? Yeah?
Mark Goings, E-17450, County One with V. Augusta. One thing I just want to point out, and by moving, like, in the past few years, we had our professional development day in May, like, it would be like the May 15th instead of the May 22nd, that would be on this calendar. One thing I want the board to be aware of is, by having that being PDIP Day, the current practice is that staff cannot take a personal day on that day. Now, if you think about, because it's, and now...
Are you talking about May 22nd?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's current practice that PDIP Days, you can't. One of the things that in the past, again, it was the Friday before the holiday, meaning two Fridays before, it's the 15th in this case, by moving it to the 22nd, many staff may have, well, not many, but some staff will have a family commitment, that Saturday tends to be a big weekend for like a college graduation, a wedding, things like that. By having it be the 22nd versus the 15th, that means that staff could not take a personal day to attend that out-of-town wedding, that out-of-town. And so, one thing I would ask is either, could there be a waiver for those very few? Or is it possible to move the 22nd to the 15th?
I, was there...
So it originally was on the 15th, and the Family Advisory Council had asked that it be moved to the 22nd.
Yep, so there are a couple of issues. One is the families didn't want to have two weeks broken apart, so like, they wanted all the vacation to be lumped together. The second issue is that the high schools have to be in session for the first full two weeks in May, because advanced placement testing is done the first two full weeks. So the 15th would not be a day that the high schools could be off. Okay. I don't know about the 20, I mean, another way is to look at the 26th. Oh, a little extended Memorial Day, well, the same amount of the weekend, but...
So they're back from the wedding.
Back from the cabin?
Presumably, they'd be back.
Okay, well, 26th?
The other pieces that, for personal days on what we would consider restricted personal days, which are days that you're not allowed to take, you're not allowed to take personal days on restricted days, which in this case would be PDIP Days or any days that bump before or after a designated break within the calendar, unless you get special permission from my office for extenuating circumstances. In the past, that has been for kind of like once-in-a-lifetime things, like weddings, graduations, that sort of things. We have made those exceptions on those days. So in the cases that Mark mentioned, those have routinely been approved, as long as the employee has a plan to, you know, grasp the information that they missed on that day. But if you're looking to, you know, get up to the campground a day early for the extended weekend, that wouldn't be something that would be approved. So from that standpoint, that personal leave wouldn't be granted, you know, if you're just looking to extend the weekend, which otherwise, they would have been able to do had it been on the 15th. You know, that piece, they may have had an option to do on the old calendar.
The, I mean, the 26th seems like a better day for that reason. Is there other reasons that it wouldn't be better than Friday to have the PDIP on the 26th? Maybe some cons to moving it to Tuesday.
Just off the top of my head, I'm thinking that for families, there's probably more families that would, for the weekend, would have off, you know, that would take off on the Friday versus on the Tuesday.
Yeah.
You know, like, right? If you're going to go away for that holiday weekend, you'd go Friday through Monday versus work on Friday and take off the additional Tuesday. I mean, so from a family standpoint, I'm assuming that's what they were speaking about at the meeting. So, moving it to the 26th would still accommodate not having two separate breaks in the month of May for families, it's just that it would, so it would still accommodate what they're looking for, I think it would just look a little bit different than what they were probably anticipating. But it would still give them only the one break, and all of the levels of school would be together, which is what they were asking for.
Okay, well, I think it makes sense to move it then to the 26th. People can still leave Eau Claire if they're getting out of town, they can leave it four on Friday or whatever, I mean, I don't know.
And if we move...
They'd shift it.
If we move the PDIP Day from the 22nd to the 26th, then our staff would still need to be back on the 26th for PDIP Day.
Yeah.
Yes.
But they'd have a better latitude to take a personal day on a Friday.
On the 22nd.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a trade-off.
Yeah, I think it's fine. Our other board members have strong opinions on that, fine with doing the 26th instead?
Again, it's less optimal for families. That's, I think, the counterargument, but...
Well, and you also have a lot of families who stay here, too, regardless of what's going on. They have band, I mean, parade, or...
I have, I have...
Sports things?
Yeah, I don't have a lot... Yeah, I don't have a lot of sense of how strongly anybody feels about this from a family perspective. I really don't.
Did the fat have very strong opinions?
They requested Friday, they requested the Friday be the day.
Kay, do you get a lot of requests for those types of waivers? Is that a relatively small number?
You mean for the exceptions on the restricted? It's relatively small.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Bika?
I just, just to that point, I'm not quite sure why it's an issue if your, if your office has been able to accommodate those exceptions. I don't know why we wouldn't keep it on that Friday.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
And my, my question then is, what would you have recommended? 26th, well, giving exception for the 15th? What would be more accommodating for the district? In other words?
I think that if we keep it, if we keep it on what's proposed on the 22nd, we'll still be able to accommodate those, you know, the graduations or the weddings, that type of thing that happened on that extended holiday weekend. What's not going to happen is the employees who are going to want to use a personal day to extend their holiday weekend for non-unique and unusual situations. So, that piece is going to limit things for staff. But the trade-off for that is going to be what the families asked for at the meeting, which was having all students off at the same period of time and then only having one break during the month of May. So, it's getting two things for the families and still providing an opportunity for staff to be off for those unique situations, if you leave it on the 22nd.
I think it's okay to leave it on the 22nd. I mean, if we're gonna be accommodating, you're okay? Giving me the okay sign? All right. Let's leave it at that, then. Anyone else in the audience wants to throw a wrench in the plan? Dan, come on up.
Dan Wilson, 3753 Patton Street. I just have a question. I'm a secondary guy, and so, I don't know why secondary PD was moved to elementary so late in the year, as some of us were just talking. To have a PD with two weeks left in the week, or left in the year, kind of like, oh, what, what's going on? So, is there a reason that the elementary couldn't have been moved back to the January, the January time? So, if we, the object was to be together, why couldn't the elementary come back to the January rather than move everybody towards the end of the year, where in PD with two weeks to go, just, I'm trying to understand the logic. It's probably above me, I just don't understand. Just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
So, the feedback we've gotten from elementary and middle schools is that they use that, they actually, that day in May used to be up towards where the first was, or the eighth, it used to be, and then it got moved down about a year or two ago. And they appreciated it being later because that's when they do their school improvement plan wrap-up for the year. And I know Kim can speak to a little bit about her experience as a principal at Patton doing that.
We also used that day not only for the school improvement planning and looking at our, the, the nice thing about the end of May is that a lot of the end-of-the-year data is in. So, it's a good time for us to take a peek at student achievement data. We use that for the school improvement plan, but we also used it for educator effectiveness. So, a lot of the instructional planning time or a lot of the team time on that day, teachers could use to take care of all of their end-of-the-year stuff for educator effectiveness. So, their SLO and their PPG and their data gathering for that, built-in time to do the things that are required.
Commissioner Torres?
How would this change affect sport practices? Because you would have two no-school days in a row. Would we be creating an additional problem?
Can I answer that question? That Friday, it's a PDIP Day, so it's, students are allowed to practice because it's not a-
Holiday?
It's not a holiday.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, would any board members like to change that? Yeah. Okay. All right, then, we will, anyone else in the audience have any questions? Okay. Seeing none, then, we'll move on from the calendar and go on to our final agenda item, which is planning for the school board's self-evaluation. So, we, our goal with that, with our self-evaluation policy, is to do that in January. I'm not, I'm thinking the second meeting in January would be a good time to do it. The, the main areas that I think we can talk through, one is kind of following up on the work session and getting, and following up on some information with that. But then, talking through governance as a board and continuing that conversation. And then, we can do those through the lens, kind of what we've done in previous years, where we have different sheets up around the room, and we can put, put down our impressions in areas we'd like to see changes or improvement. But I'm wondering, too, if, if, Commissioner Hambuch Boyle, did you-
When did you want to do it? Like, before or after? In lieu of work session?
I honestly think in lieu of.
Yeah, work session.
And we could do, we could still do closed session if we wish that day, but then, really, most of our, we could, we could do our business agenda, what we need to approve, and then the rest of that meeting could be our board's self-evaluation. And we could invite, I know the superintendent generally is in attendance with us, but we could also invite the executive team to join us as well. It would be during the same time period. I don't know if that would work for board members of doing it at that time? Okay, I'm not seeing, is that fine? Okay. And generally, the, this process gives us that, that, again, that opportunity to look at our goals, to look at our policies, to look at what do we need to do for the coming year? What do we perhaps need to strengthen or identify areas for change? And put that in a document that we can hold ourselves accountable to as a board, like we've done in previous years. So, important process. So, the second board meeting will look to do that. And any areas that you would like to specifically see brought up in the context of that, you can certainly send them ahead of time, and we'll put it on the agenda. Otherwise, it'll be pretty open. So, I think the other piece of that, too, is looking at, as a board, we have, I'll move on now to requests for future agenda items. The, the ones I'm thinking of is we'll need to do our updates on the programs, the LEAP programs, I believe. There, we have to do annual updates in January, so we'll have to plan those. So, I'm assuming LEAP, okay. So, we'll have to plan those, and, yeah, Commissioner, sorry, Dr. Hardback?
You also have to review the renewal of the McKinley contract in January.
Okay.
So, that will be brought to you probably at the second meeting in January. Typically, it's, you've had an opportunity to review the contract, and it's a matter of asking any questions and then moving on. So, you could still have your work session.
Okay. Okay. Absolutely. Yes.
Could I just ask, but the LEAP point, was that, was that to review individual programs that are up and running under LEAP, or like a LEAP zone?
Yeah, they have to have an annual report.
And so, we were looking to do that in, in January timeframe?
Prob, yeah, we could, I mean, see, seeing where they're at, and if it'd, if it'd be ready for the first in January, that'd be good, but otherwise, maybe they'd be-
I don't think so. I think we, we kind of, you caught us a little flat.
No, I know. And we can, I think it says January, but if we need to wait until February, we can, or March, I mean, but just making sure that we're on top of it.
I guess we should get it on agenda.
So, that'll be something, just, I guess I bring it up because making sure that LEAP is aware that we need to do that, and then, there's, there's, too, the, the kind of lingering idea of wanting to put together some sort of a prospectus for a secondary project-based charter school in line with the grant, and whether or not LEAP wants to take that up and do that, or put together a subgroup to study that. So, that'll have to be something LEAP decides and talks through. I can- Do you have any material on that? I can email some items, too. All right, any other requests for future agenda items board members have? Okay. Seeing none, then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So, is there a second? Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
So, you were looking for language to replace the Wednesday church for the Church Wednesday, Wednesday church night, remember? Here you go. Civic learning and democratic engagement night.
Oh, I like that.
School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.